Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is May 13th, 2020. Due to the social distancing guidelines and Governor Wolf's stay-at-home order, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Okay.
Perfectly in sync.
There we go. That was, I know. So, okay, I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, please, please record it now. Okay, and we are all, we're all here and there are no substitute professionals. Let's see, as far as announcements, I'd like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on May 11th, 2020, as a part of the regularly scheduled workshop meeting held on that date to discuss one personnel matter and one litigation matter. Okay, and then I have a statement concerning the COVID-19 situation. As we approach the end of another day under the Governor's stay-at-home order for our community and the region, the thoughts and prayers of the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners go out to all those impacted by this pandemic. In response to the Governor's state reopening plan and the recent easing of restrictions to allow the construction activities to resume, Springfield Township has developed a return-to-work plan for township employees and operations. The plan is available on the COVID-19 resources page of the township website, www.springfieldmontco.org, and outlines a phased approach to reopening township facilities and programs. All township facilities, including the Township Administration Building, the Free Library of Springfield Township, and municipal playgrounds remain closed until our region moves past the red phase in the Governor's reopening plan. During this time, all nonessential township employees will be working remotely but will continue to monitor and respond to all email and telephone messages during the business day to assist residents as needed. In addition, the Free Library of Springfield Township offers a digital resource center for patrons to download ebooks, audiobooks, and other materials. If you do not have a library card, please visit the library website at www-freelibraryofspringfieldtownship.org to obtain one. Refuge, recycling, and other waste removal activities will continue on their normal schedule, and the men and women of the Springfield Township Police Department will continue to ensure the safety and security of the community. With the easing of restrictions on construction activities, the building and zoning department has also resumed permit and inspection operations. The Board would also like to share that the Montgomery County Board of Electors recently voted to consolidate all polling locations in the township for the rescheduled primary election on Tuesday, June 2nd. The polls will be open on Election Day, but instead of going to your normal voting location, registered voters will need to vote at one of four new polling locations, all of which are located in school district facilities. Please refer to the township's website for the list of special COVID-19 polling locations. Residents have the option and are encouraged to apply for a mail-in ballot. Instructions on how to obtain a mail-in ballot are available on the Montgomery County website, www.montco PA.org. Although the number of positive cases remain high in our township, there is hope that we are starting to turn the corner on this public health crisis and might be able to regain a sense of normalcy in the foreseeable future. As such, the Board of Commissioners strongly urges all residents and businesses to remain steadfast in the ongoing fight against COVID-19 and to continue adhering to state and county health guidelines. We as a community owe it to our first responders, local health professionals, and all other essential workers to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus and to minimize the potential for a second wave of afflictions. If you or a loved one are exhibiting any symptoms of the COVID-19 virus, have had contact with anyone who has tested positive, or have a doctor's recommendation to be tested, Montgomery County has set up a drive-through testing site at the Montgomery County Community College Blue Bell Campus. Appointments are required in order to be tested. Please register at www.montco PA.org. Please continue to monitor the Springfield Township and Montgomery County websites for updated information related to COVID-19. In conclusion, please be kind to one another and be sure to check on your neighbors and loved ones, especially seniors and those who live alone. Stay positive and resist the urge to question how others are coping with the current conditions. Okay, so that concludes the public portion of the meeting. I'm sorry, I take it back, that we are now into the public portion of the meeting. And as part of the advertising for tonight's business meeting, an effort was made to solicit public comment in advance of the meeting, and public comment was accepted via email up to 5:00 PM this evening. And I do not believe we received any comments, and I don't believe we have anybody in the audience, so if I will say that if anybody joins us between now and the end of the, of the meeting, we will open the meeting up once again for public comment, and at that time, please be advised that the committee reports will have already been submitted and action will have, will have been taken. So that will, that will happen at that point. And we are now into the committee reports, and I have one report concerning the Sandy Run Country Club. I move that in compliance with Section 512.1 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, the Board of Commissioners waive the formal land development review process for Sandy Run Country Club in order to permit the construction of a 1,000-square-foot golf cart storage building. The waiver is conditioned upon the dedication of additional right-of-way along Walnut Avenue as shown on a right-of-way acquisition plan dated May 6, 2020, prepared by Boucher &amp; James, Inc., and the granting of a temporary construction easement necessary to construct a six-foot-wide paved walkway along Walnut Avenue for the intersection, from the intersection with Orland Mill Road to a .1500 feet westerly thereof. Prior to issuing a use and occupancy certificate for the storage building, the club shall be required to execute and submit to the township all requisite right-of-ways and easement documents for recording. And that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, please note if you are in favor.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, and that concludes my report, and now we will move on to Commissioner Harbison, the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee.
I made my visibility quote.
There you go.
Yes, we're all getting a little stir-crazy here. Item two on the agenda of the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the April check reconciliation in the amount of $697,073.94 in the May bill listing in the amount of $816,813.17. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions on the motion? No questions, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next, we have Resolution Number 1493. Pennsylvania Act 15 of 2020 addresses many local government issues related to the COVID-19 pandemic, including the ability to conduct public meetings remotely and to postpone the local property tax discount period and to waive late fees and penalties. Many of the provisions of Act 15 were previously addressed by the Board of Commissioners when an enacted ordinance number 964 and a special meeting conducted on March 26, 2020. However, Act 15 requires that any such action by the Board be taken by resolution and that a copy of such resolution shall be delivered to the tax collector within 30 days of the effective date of Act 15. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1493, a resolution confirming the previous extension of time for the payment and filing of certain local taxes granted by the Board of Commissioners in Ordinance Number 964, and further waiving any fee or penalty otherwise associated with the payment of real estate property taxes or service fees if paid in full by July 31, 2020. As a result of Resolution Number 1493, a 2% discount may be deducted by property owners if their real estate taxes and refuse service fees are paid by May 31st, and no penalty or late fee will be imposed if paid in full between June 1 and July 31st. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Item four on the agenda is Resolution Number 1494. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1494, Resolution Designating Brandon J. Ford Assistant to the Manager as the authorized agent for Springfield Township to work with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency to secure financial assistance for the township related to the COVID-19 Public Assistance Program. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, are all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are you there?
He froze.
He froze. Okay. I have my teleprompter up, I can't see. Sorry, we have, we have a situation. Thank you, okay. We have a situation where Ann is running a meeting in the other room and we're, you know, we're sucking all the bandwidth out of our internet here, so, sorry about that. Anyway, okay, so please, please record a unanimous vote on that one.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I have item number five. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of Ordinance Number 966, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of Springfield Township Chapter 63 pensions to adjust the 12-month period used to calculate the Consumer Price Index for the three defined benefit pension plans. The regulations currently contained in Chapter 63 require the township to measure the CPI from January to January of each year, which creates accounting and administrative issues. The proposed adjustment period will measure CPI from October to October of each year. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Okay, next, we will hear from the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resource Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one report on the recycling tonight, and pleased to report that during the month of April 2020, Springfield Township residents recycled 251.24 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 80.8%. The net cost for the month was $27,822.79. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next, we will move to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. The first one is I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Kelly Barcelli and Janine DePaul Nelson to a new three-year term of service on the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The new three-year terms of service shall expire on May the 12th, 2023. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion? No questions, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And then my second motion is the mission of the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission is to protect, conserve, and enhance the Commonwealth's aquatic resources and to provide boating and fishing opportunities. In an effort to promote this, their mission, and to apply uniform fishing regulations at the township's two fishing locations, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee has recommend, recommended the adoption of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission Regulation. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the regulations established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission for all fishing activities at Hillcrest Pond and Sandy Run Park. The township's fishing regulations can be found on the township's website at www.springfieldmontco.org and search the word fishing. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion?
Yes, I have a question, or a discussion, anyway. I would like to remind the Board that Hillcrest Pond in Cisco Park has, has always had a very, very special relationship with the township. And the, the current requirements for fishing at the park are anybody can, any, any child under 15, 15 and under can fish without a license, and any senior 65 years or older can fish, fish without a license. So we would be, we would be, if we enact this ordinance, we would be changing that, those fishing rules at Hillcrest Pond. So basically, any angler who is licensed by the state of Pennsylvania will, will be able to, no matter what their age, will be able to fish in Hillcrest Pond. The spirit of, the spirit of the Friends of Hillcrest Pond and the spirit of Cisco Park and Jim Cisco, as we all remember, what was to make the pond and all about the kids. And although the kids will still be allowed to fish up to the age of 15 without a license, they will, they will now have significant competition by any, any, any Pennsylvanian of any age who has, who carries a license. And the, and those, those licensed individuals would be able to extract the, you know, the, whatever the legal maximum number of fish are every day, and, and possibly, you know, take that pleasure or enjoyment away from children, child, children. So I, I just, I'm not saying that the, the Friends of Hillcrest Pond are opposed to this concept, I'm just saying that it, I want the Board to recognize it's a big change, and it may have deleterious effects on those, on, on the, the kids who have for so many years enjoyed the almost exclusive right to fish there. So I will not be, I will not be voting in favor of this motion, but I would leave all others up to their judgment. Thank you.
It was my understanding that the, that this has come with the approval of the Friends of the Pond, and I would defer to them. If it's caused a problem, I didn't think they were, they pay for the stocking, don't they?
No, this township pays for the stocking.
Then if they object to it, then we might revisit it.
Well, they don't object to it. They, they just feel, they, you know, they, they feel that this, the spirit of the pond and the legacy of Mr. Cisco is being changed by this ordinance. That's, that's the only point they would want to make. And again, I want to tell everybody again that I, I mean, I sit on the board of the Friends of Hillcrest Pond also, so, but, you know, I'm, I'm just, I would be voting as an individual, not as a representative of the Friends of Hillcrest Pond, but I just want everyone to understand the change here that we're contemplating and the, and the effects that it might have on the community, the fishing community.
This is the first time this has ever happened? This is the first time this has happened?
Yes, I believe that, I thought that the, we were requesting this ordinance because it would allow, because of the virus or, you know, the pandemic, that it would allow more people to come out and enjoy a family outing with their, their people, with their, with their children. I did not think of the, you know, the aspects that Pete is now, Commissioner Wilson is now bringing up, I did not think about that, that, he has a valid point, in my opinion.
Can I ask one question? Do we have an idea or an understanding what the effects of overfishing this pond, since it's catch and release, what's that going to do to the fishing of the pond? Well, first of all, it doesn't have to be catch and release. Okay. If you go by the, if you're, if you're now operating under the state of Pennsylvania fishing regulations, you can keep the, if they're the right size, obviously, you know, you can keep the fish up to your daily limit.
Okay.
And just to, to further answer your question, I believe that we stock the, the pond with at least 300. Mike, is that right?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Yeah, brown trout every year, so, plus or minus, you know, so.
What size fish do we stock, Mike?
I don't know off the top of my head, they, they vary in size, but we try and get the big, some pretty big ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There are ones that might actually attract grown-up fishermen.
Oh, sure, for sure. And that's part of the, that's part of why the proposal came up, because, you know, there are folks who will go down there and fish inappropriately, and it, it, other, some people have taken it upon themselves to become the policeman for fishing down there, and it kind of starts arguments back and forth, because, you know, the people who come to fish aren't necessarily from in-town and don't know what the rules are, they just see a pond that's got fish in it, they think they can fish there. So it was, the, the point of the whole adoption of the regulations, and it's not an ordinance, so it's not a, as formal as that, was just to be consistent with the other fishing location that we have in town at Sandy Run Park. I mean, if you feel strongly enough that you want to table it or, or not do it, it's easy enough to just kind of continue the way we are.
Is there, could there be an opportunity, if, if one of the purposes to open it up a little bit because of the COVID, maybe the age change could be on an interim basis? We could have it with a year expiration and revisit that part of it. Peter, you made it sound like they're, the Friends of the Pond are not crazy about it, even if they're not outwardly objecting to it.
Well, they're not out, they are not outwardly objecting to it, and, and, and they are also not crazy about the change.
Can we make it, can we make it, can we, can we make a catch and release? I mean, making a catch and release doesn't go against the state regulation if we...
Yeah, do the kids keep it? Who keeps the fish they catch?
Yeah.
Some people do, some people just choose to put it back in because they don't want to have to deal with cooking it or cutting it up.
Sometimes you kill them, too.
I think the awkwardness is going to be, is you're going to have now, you know, every licensed fisherman in the state of Pennsylvania entitled to fish in this pond.
Right, but if you made a catch release, maybe that'll scare people away or something, you know?
Some of the catch and release, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
No, you just said, who's going to enforce that? That's all.
Well, Pete, is the concern overcrowding or overfishing?
I think it's overfishing by people who are not kids.
Are the current regulations posted on signs down there?
Yeah, they are.
Okay, so we have...
15 and under, 65 and over, in two or three locations.
Okay, so the problem is enforcement. If we're having arguments with people who've been there... It sounds like that's the problem. Yeah, we don't want, we don't want confrontation.
Well, I will say this, you know, I know that in Sandy Run, we've had, I know this well, because I've been dealing with emails, we've been having some issues with people breaking in and, and fishing, and, you know, we don't want to have a fishing apocalypse, you know, over there, if that's an issue, so.
Fair, the ironic thing is, the person who's complaining about that could take their grandchildren over to Hillcrest Pond and fish.
I, I understand, yeah, I understand, yeah. Yeah, I know, but...
Well, I'm kind of with Peter here, and then, you know, without the full endorsement of the, we talked about this Monday, and it was ambiguous as to where they were, and so that's consistent with what Peter's saying. I'm not sure this is a compelling enough reason, it's not important that the rules be the same between the parks, and if we wanted one to be catch and release or just to leave it the way it is, to let Pete and all the young guys, are you the only one that can fish here, Pete, of our group?
Yeah, I can fish. I can fish there with no license.
Oh, Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Garrity-esque can do it, yeah.
Anyway, I, I'm okay with that, if we start having fistfights or something, or it becomes a bigger issue, or unless I'm not, I'm missing something here, maybe that's the lesser of two evils, and particularly with Sandy Run closed right now, then you really might get some people fishing there that are keeping them and catching and catching trout, yeah, that's a lot. So I'd be happy to table it or vote it down.
Can we, can we alleviate this by opening up Sandy Run and getting signs made up stating that basically we can't guarantee that the railing is sanitized and you have to use, you know, use caution or something like that?
Or are you saying, Mike, that there's just not a lot of room there to cast and...
A compact area where you're not going to be able to do social distancing. I mean, people are going to go there with the intent to fish, and they're not going to turn around if they see, you know, a place packed.
Yeah.
They're going to, they're going to try and fish.
And they don't really pay attention to the signs out there either.
Okay.
I left, I left Monday's meeting thinking that Friends of the Pond were on board, and if they're not fully on board, I'd like to hear more from them.
That's fine.
Yeah, well, I don't have any, I don't have any problem tabling it, you know, I mean, you know...
Pete just brought up a valid point that I just didn't think about, that's, he does have, that's a valid point. Would you like to table it, and I can bring it up to the committee via email or, you know, just reach out and ask the committee what they think on this, or, or what?
There's no urgency on it, if you guys table it, and you, you'll have another...
You'll have the first week in June.
All right, well, well, so Pete, why don't you make a, why don't you make a motion to table, the table this, and we will, I'll ask for a second, and then we'll vote that.
Okay.
All right.
So I will make the motion to table this regulation regarding opening up Hillcrest Pond to, to, you know, regulated open fishing.
Okay.
Licensed fishing.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, and we, we've had our discussion, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye, all opposed, okay? We have a unanimous vote then, okay, great.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay.
I will be reaching out to Commissioner Wilson within the next day or so, so we can talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, 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 we are now, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next, we will hear from the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening, it's Resolution Number 1495. On May 9th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 1449, requesting PennDOT to review the traffic and surrounding site conditions for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Bethclen, Viking, Gordon Road. PennDOT's preliminary analysis indicated that a signal may be warranted, but directed the township to complete an additional study to confirm the preliminary warrants, and to conduct the neighborhood impacts analysis. The results of the study included the following. One, that a majority... One, that a majority of the crashes at the intersection were caused by improper driving and roadway geometry and will not be corrected by the installation of a traffic signal. Two, while the warrants are indeed met for one of the four qualifying conditions, the overall level of service at the intersection will be reduced via the installation of a traffic signal. Three, the installation of a traffic signal will have minimal improvement on the adjacent intersections, which will operate at the same levels of service with or without a traffic signal. And four, a potential exists for an increase in crashes due to the horizontal curve and the steep downgrade when the northbound approach to the intersection. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution one four nine five, resolution rescinding the resolution number one four four nine, and to withdraw the township's earlier request for the installation of a traffic signal at Bethlehem Pike and Gordon Road, Erdine. That is my motion.
Thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Okay.
I would just make a comment that the, uh, study done by our traffic engineer was more extensive than what Pendot, um, put into the effort when they made their preliminary, um, warrant.
Okay. And I, and I know that in our meeting on, on Monday, uh, there were some neighbors who requested that we continue discussing ways that we could make that, that it's not just that one intersection, but just that, that, uh, section of, of, uh, road, uh, on Bethlehem Pike safer. So we'll just continue discussing that sort of thing with the neighbors as we go along, although we don't have any specific, you know, agenda for that right now, so. Okay, so, um, uh, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed? Nay. Okay. Please record a unanimous vote. Great.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. All right. So next we will, uh, hear from Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So the zoning hearing board meeting scheduled for Monday, May twenty-fifth, uh, has been canceled, uh, due to no petitions, uh, have been received. So the next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning hearing board will be Monday, June twenty-second at seven P M. Um, and as with all the township meetings, the meeting will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform until, uh, further notice. That's my report.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Okay, next we will hear from the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. But first, I would like to just publicly recognize the Public Works Department and, Director Don Siriani, who've continued to serve the township, you know, during these tough times, keeping everything running smooth, um, you know, having their guys in harm's way. Uh, so we're, we're really lucky to have, um, such a great department and people, you know, as an asset. So just wanted to put that thank you out there. My first motion, um, on Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, bids were received for the Paper Mill Road School Zone Signals. Bids were received from five contractors and ranged from a low of seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars to a high of one hundred and eighteen thousand and four dollars plus alternates. The low bidder for the base project plus alternates was Armor &amp; Sons Electric, Inc. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Armor &amp; Sons Electric, Inc. of Langhorne, PA, to supply and install school zone warning signals on Paper Mill Road for their low bid, low base bid price of seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus alternate number one for solar-powered signals in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. And if required, alternate two for sidewalk restoration in the amount of three thousand dollars for a total contract cost of eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. With the award, the solar alternate change order will be issued to deduct the value of the conventional electric service in the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars, which will result in a total net contract value of eighty-two thousand sixty-eight dollars. The project is being funded via two thousand nineteen Montgomery County Transportation Grant in the amount seventy-nine thousand seventy-two dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It doesn't work. There we.
Hey.
It disappears.
It disappears. Okay. Nay? No.
No.
Okay. Please, there we go. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay.
It's like the match, it's like the match game, Trevor.
Yeah.
Uh, my second motion, uh, for the two thousand twenty highway resurfacing program. On Wednesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty, bids were received for the township's two thousand twenty highway resurfacing and milling program. Bids were received from three contractors, Glasgow, Inc., Allen Myers, James Morrissey, Inc. Bids range from a low of three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars to a high of four hundred and four thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Glasgow, Inc., Glenside, PA, to mill and resurface specified township streets for a total bid price three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions on the motion?
I have a question. Do we expect any delays as a result of the COVID, from this work starting, taking place, or?
The only delay that we expect, Pete, is that Station Avenue is to be resurfaced and, um, Pico, or I'm sorry, Aqua plans to install a new water main on that street from South Fairway, uh, to Church Road. So depending upon when they get their work completed, the Station Avenue component may be delayed, but the remainder of the job, um, should be on schedule. In fact, Glasgow is, uh, currently working in Plymouth Township as we speak on their resurfacing project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, all opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That includes my report.
Okay. So now we are once again into the public portion of the meeting and, uh, it, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public, but as there is no public in attendance, I will, uh, move to, or I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So moved, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.